Budget deliberations, welcome to those that's in the gallery. You're more than welcome. Our first one for today, for our second day is Main Street. Wendy? You have designated.
I'm Tom and Rep.
Okay.
Rep Rogers and Tom Meyer represent.
Okay.
Right, so I'm Tom Meyer, I think everyone knows me. President of the Board of Directors for Main Street. And just real quick, one of the things that we took away from last year that we worked on was expanding the diversity of the board and the membership in Main Street. So we included in your packet a list now of the rather full strength, much larger Board of Directors for Main Street. One of whom is Mr. Rep Rogers, who's going to deliver our, what we hope is a short presentation on what Main Street's doing and what our plans are for the future and our contributions to the economic development of Leavenworth. And then we'll have some time for discussion also. Rep.
Thank you, Tom. Good afternoon, Mr. Dedeky and Commissioners of Leavenworth. My name is Rep Rogers, he said it, also known as Everett Rogers. I've been a member of the board. This is my first board I've been on and will be in for the 2016 to 2019 cycle with Leavenworth Main Street. A little bit about myself, I got involved with Leavenworth Main Street as a desire to have the services and goods that I would like to use when I'm in town. I work on post, I'd like to be able to come off post and buy a lunch and go buy, you know, things in the town and take them back to the family. So I figured if I want that, I need to be able to invest in that particular process. So that's what I've done. Over the next 10 minutes or so, I think we're going to talk a little bit about what Leavenworth Main Street is asking for and what we're going to do with that amount of investment. So if you'd be so kind to listen up. So why are we here? We're looking for an investment of $31,000 from the city of Leavenworth to the Leavenworth Main Street program to assist us with providing support to Leavenworth businesses, to promoting the city of Leavenworth, and for doing historic preservation and the Leavenworth Main Street, or the Main Street program points, for points. So our investments help keep Leavenworth downtown vibrant and a welcoming location for people from all over the area. Folks who come across this river from Platt City to work here, who come and come to visit us for some of our events. Picture that's noted there is from a Live After Five event, just the craft beer crawl or walk just the last month of, or just last week, or two weeks ago. All right? So what does the Main Street do? What do you get, what we can do with that $31,000? Provides support to maintaining a vital downtown. As I mentioned, those businesses downtown, it's kind of a cycle of development. If the people are there, businesses say, "I would like to locate there." If the businesses are there, people say, "I'd like to go there." So those two things work hand in hand. Leavenworth Main Street helps provide new business owners with a resource to starting a new business, getting small business loans, and putting that business and resource availability to the consumers. So it kind of leads together. Money to start, money to the owner, and money back to the city in the form of tax dollars as people buy things from that. Skip down to the third bullet, enacted downtown as a symbol of communities' economic health and local quality of life, pride and community history. You can see other places, over the last two or three months, I've visited Abilene, I've visited Strong City, some places that don't have the vibrant downtown kind of life that we enjoy here in Leavenworth. And we'd like to see that continue. You can go across the river of Platt City to see an example of a downtown that's kind of been bypassed by different economic development sectors. So we would like to make sure that companies and individuals find Leavenworth a welcoming place to do business and both from their side of the profit and our side for the tax dollars. Lawrence is another example of what a vibrant downtown could look like. You know, people go to Lawrence, go to KU, but people go to Lawrence, go Mass Street sometimes. They just, that's, I never go to KU for anything, but I go to Lawrence, I go to Mass Street. It's a vibrant downtown, it's a fun place to be, and you go there as a destination. I think that Leavenworth could also be that, and Leavenworth Main Street helps support that function. So, and I'll skip down into the traditional community, commercial district is an ideal location for independent businesses. A lot of the opportunities we have, the very few, the very limited open storefronts we have, is a fairly reasonable rent for them to move into a small, usually in the downtown area, the locations are smaller, so it's good for a startup location. You don't necessarily see that out on the retail strip malls. They have an investment that's brand new that they have to make back, so they have to have the rents higher. But the downtown area has an opportunity to give them an easy start point. Helps promote activity for other businesses. If you travel to Zona Rosa, I didn't probably touch on this at beginning, but Zona Rosa created an artificial downtown. They want to be like Leavenworth, so they created that type of artificial downtown. We have that already set up. We should be able to reap the benefits of having that right now in Leavenworth. And you can see the other items out there. A lot of those are things you already know about Leavenworth Main Street and what we are, what we try to do. All right? So you can see if you have an investment of $31,000, that we are invested in the community too. The businesses that are members of the Leavenworth Main Street program make a business investment. So we're getting about $32,000 from them. That's what their investment is into our program. Other downtown marketing, either both by dollars that are raised or sharing agreements, is worth about $26,000 of marketing for Leavenworth. Not just Leavenworth downtown, but Leavenworth itself. Promotions we have raise about $26,000 from people coming downtown, buying things, participating in the promotions downtown. And we have just straight donations of $20 for $1,000 from other people in the larger community who make donations to Leavenworth Main Street program. My wife and I, as an example of that, we have been, we've made donations to Leavenworth Main Street because we want to have a good vibrant downtown. I'll make one correction to this, because I made a mistake in my return on investment numbers. It's 4.54 times the amount of investment that the leveraging, you get that money, it's really about 354% ROI when you strip out the investment. Yeah. No, no, I, that was my, that was my fault, and I said, "I gotta check that, it doesn't seem a little better." It's about 354% return on investment. So you make $31,000 investment in Main Street, and you get to leverage that 4.54 times for a return on investment of 354%. And what do you get for that investment? What'd you get as community involvement? As I started talking about, my wife and I got involved with the Main Street program. We had run a party, Irish food party at our house, but we decided that getting 150 people in our house was too much and was damaging our property actually, so we thought maybe we could do something with these people.
Well, you shouldn't have an Irish party and not expect them.
So we said...
That's your fault.
When you get 150 people here, maybe we can do something for the community. So we decided to work with Leavenworth Main Street and a secondary sponsored charity as a fundraiser to bring money for Leavenworth Main Street and for the secondary sponsored charity, which will always be local. It's not going to be something, a national thing, it's going to be some type of local. Last, the most recent one was the Trinity Lutheran Food Pantry, raised money for the food pantry, actually had some food that was donated directly to them from the event. It was a very, very well turned out event, you can see the pictures there. We brought people from all over. Our volunteers were from McLough, they are from Roland Park, as you can see, there's Scott Parks on the picture there. We had people from Platt City volunteering to work with us on the Leavenworth Main Street project and bringing their money, their time, and their talents to this community here. For many reasons, but they were participatory. So you get community involvement, we get business development. As you can see there in the top graph, just a little insert, that a local restaurant, 83% of its profits, of its money generated stays in the local community. Donald's money may go away, Hari's money may go away, but money from the depot stays here in Leavenworth. Money from Pullman stays here in Leavenworth. And that's, that's what we're trying to do in that vibrant downtown, is keep that money here in Leavenworth and raise some tax revenue for the city. Historic preservation, we have a couple pictures down there. One of them is a pot rack, a very successful local small business, how we helped them put together and renovate their storefront to make that a successful business. And we brought the Tenpenny Downtown from out there on the edge. That was still in Leavenworth, but now it's in a downtown spot. They get to benefit from the hotels, they get to benefit from, you know, the three hotels coming in and they improve, vitalize downtown. Marketing promotion, I've made a little comments on this before, but when Leavenworth Main Street puts together promotion, they're not just promoting downtown, they're promoting Leavenworth as a destination. A Leavenworth event gets people into Leavenworth. Our Irish party, we had people come, like I said, from McLough, from downtown, they stayed in the hotels. They stayed at the Fairfield, they stayed at the Hampton. They were here because it was an Irish party. You're not driving home after the Irish party. So they, we helped generate local economic growth there. Social media options, you know, when we're marketing both on the staycation video spots, on TV and things, those are options to show Leavenworth and people who go to Facebook. There is about 2,000 likes that we have, so we're carrying a little bit of a following on Facebook. And, but it gives people a quick ready reference to see what's happening in Leavenworth today now. It's always current. And hosted events generate tax revenue. We have a summer concert series, two of the three are done so far for the year, but that gets, we're getting about 300, 400 people in there, right? Every Saturday for those concerts. So that gets them downtown, that gets them spending money. Alive After Five, that brings cash registers. Our participating companies get people into the business and people are buying stuff and it gets more exposure. That's been a growing program, it's a fairly new one and it's growing. The Leavenworth City Market, Farmer's Market if you will, that gets a lot of exposure on Wednesdays and Saturdays and on summer sidewalk sales. All those are things that we can promote and bring people into the downtown Leavenworth Our 2016 money, this is $20,000, so if anybody's added together what we're asking for and what we think we can do with that money and added these together, I actually was behind power curve a little bit on that. This is how we use the money that you've already given us. It was $154,000 if you add up all those components of economic development and how they were spent over the year, or will be spent over, or were spent over the year. Some of it to recruitment, some of it to retention. Some of our retention options, operations are actually fairly significant when you have somebody who says, "I'm thinking of moving out to the edge of town, maybe moving out to Lansing or something." By making sure that we, that we let them know that they're wanted, they're loved, we can get them business, we can keep them in downtown, keep them in Leavenworth too. And community events down there at the bottom, I'll talk about that again. Lots of different things, not just the Rogers Irish Party, but we have the Hogwild, Wild West, Wild Hogwild West barbecue competition coming up. Yeah, trying to remember the name of it. And we have...
I thought that was canceled or something.
I think we're still working that.
No, for sure. It's not happening.
Okay, all right. So, we were trying, I thought Joey Dinne was putting together. So, those type of events that we do to help bring people in from outside of Leavenworth to take advantage of our community's opportunities and to spend some of their money here with us in the town. So in summary, what I want to talk about is that Leavenworth Main Street program, since its inception, has helped raise the downtown occupancy rate from about 80% to 95. It's kind of, kind of fluctuates between 93 and 95%, which has increased jobs and increased tax revenue. Of the 253 storefront businesses in the 28 block area of Leavenworth Main Street, about 130, 135 are members of Leavenworth Main Street, so just over 50%. Even in that, we've provided significant assistance to 89 businesses in the area, financial assistance, renovation, expertise assistance, and not even all of those are still members of the Main Street. So we have some work to do and we understand that. One of the big numbers here that we didn't talk about earlier is the volunteer hours. We've had all those volunteers for all those events we've talked about, it's 11,856 volunteer hours. Using the Kansas State recognized labor rate for volunteers, that's an additional $200,000 of value coming to the city with an investment in Leavenworth Main Street. So your return on investment comes closer to 900% when you consider the volunteer hours that are leveraged into there in support of Leavenworth Main Street. And we still attract all those, those type of events, and the fact that we have those things down here attracts thousands of visitors and shoppers to the area to come to Leavenworth. People from Easton, people from Platt City have, take the opportunity to come shop at Leavenworth. Either because they work here and it's close, or because they came here for a specific item. All right? And to wrap it up, talk about the vision. That's our mission, what we're trying to accomplish and our vision, how we try to leverage that, where we see Leavenworth Main Street, making a social center of the community known for diverse retail, service businesses, comfortable, convenient living, and an atmosphere of vibrancy and pride. And with that, I will receive questions.
Sam, I have questions.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
The Economic Restructuring Committee, how many businesses have you recruited this year? New businesses, I mean. And how many outside the city of Leavenworth?
See if I can find my numbers for 2016. You mean from, who didn't have a, they existed elsewhere before...
It doesn't matter, just new to us, new to us.
Can you help me with that, Tom?
How many, how many calls did you make and how many businesses did you actually recruit?
Well, I believe there was, there was about nine businesses that came in that were specifically brought in, made a first contact with Leavenworth for 2016, nine businesses.
That made a contact with you?
Yes, came through and then formed a business. I want to give Tom credit for starting a business in 2016 too. He did start...
Well, he's kind of already here too, but...
Yeah, so he wasn't outside...
I just want to know, you know, economic restructuring is identifying and recruiting units to respond to the changing market. I just wanted to see, because I mean, we just recently got a letter from Wendy about, you know, our economic development here at the city, we're trying to recruit new businesses, and I just wanted to see how many Main Street is actually recruiting before we do that.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it was about nine. I know Crimson Hill was one, off the top of my head was one. Like I said, Tom's was here. We're recruiting with, trying to get a downtown grocery, we're making contacts with Sun Fresh, there's a couple of businesses like that we're trying to get in downtown. We're trying to keep...
I'd like to know that at every report you do, please. I've asked for that last time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You know, I thought that we had this on this list broken out. I apologize, so we'll have to call it back up again, but what we did give you was...
Yeah, especially since we're looking at that too, we want to know what you guys are doing so.
Exactly, and I know you had asked me for that, and I thought that I had double-checked that, and I failed to do that, but the list I have sitting in the office was nine for sure, of course, mine being one of them.
Yep.
If you send it to Paul, he can say that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know one thing that Main Street does that's most visible, and I'm very, very appreciative personally, but I know well-attended are your second Saturday, the concert series down Haymarket Square, you do three or four, you know, during the warm months, and well, well-attended. Do you fund all those yourself, or do you get sponsors for those?
There are sponsors for those. There are sponsors, some of them are Main Street members, and they get to claim their sponsorship, their membership is part of that sponsorship.
Okay, so you seek sponsors for people to help you out for that?
Yes, we do.
Because I'm sure that's fairly expensive, because those are not a band that I'd play in and you'd pay me five bucks and a hot dog. I mean, they're pretty, pretty good entertainment.
Yeah, well, that's a good point. So all, so all the banners that are wrapped around the poles and set up are sponsors at some level.
Oh, thank them.
Yes.
Yeah, because those are well, well-attended and...
And this year, the attendance has really gone up too.
The weather's been, you know, perfect. We haven't had rain out.
Hotels, yeah. I mean, just, and I just think it was after we had that first one with that huge crowd that everybody was, you know, and maybe it's the bands, I mean, we went back to some bands we had in the past too. You know, these were some bands that were popular two or three years ago, and we went back to them. And I'll tell you, some of them are a little bit more expensive, but we found that we get a much, you know, known bands. And then certainly, I will tell you that Dave Staub, who manages Grinders, joined the board.
Yeah.
And so leveraging them in that he now promotes what's going on, as a matter of fact, he's tied in their marketing to where, so when we have a band, you know, he sets it up that then they go to karaoke that starts at like 10 o'clock. So after the band, so people who come from out of town know that, hey, if I come from out of town, because I'm a Grinders fan, I'm on their website, oh, Grinders is sponsoring this concert up in Leavenworth, and then after the concert, I can go down to the Grinders High Noon and do karaoke. I mean, and I went down there after the event and that place was packed, so they did a good job of tying in, coordinating. Because he was even, at one of the events, after he joined the board, he's like, he looked at their summer schedule and they had had a band scheduled, and they put off their band, they just pushed it a week so it didn't compete. So trying to get a little bit more integration with, because on our board too, of course, the Chamber, the Visitors Bureau, and...
LCDC?
LCDC all sit on and come to the board meetings too, so we've got a lot of information sharing and trying to make sure that we are not stepping on each other's toes and that we're also supporting each other's events, you know, as a team.
Well, thank you and your sponsors for the events. One other question or just something to throw out, and we discussed a little bit yesterday. Some of us have received some concerns, I don't necessarily say complaints, but possibly complaints from some local business owners downtown on the parking issue. Obviously downtown Leavenworth has a finite amount of parking, but that finite amount is really plenty to handle what's needed. But as you know, in a small town, people like to drive up in front of their business, get out, walk into the store. Well, as an example I always use, if you got a parking spot 100 yards from Dillard's Door at Oak Park, you think you hit the jackpot when you walk in, but no one wants, in a small town, they expect to park right in front. And a particular business owner has called, I know some of us, and some issues on Cherokee. Cherokee's getting a lot more action these days with Luigi's, Tenpenny, et cetera. And now we have more lofts downtown, and say, two people live in a loft, they possibly will have two cars, possibly three, and he just anecdotally said, you know, there's been a car parked, there was a car parked here for three months and didn't move, and we don't have parking enforcement. We did remove that from the budget because of, we had to a couple of years ago for money. And so we can't force it. He said he has talked with landlords, people who own the lofts, and they just blew them off, said, "Huh, not my problem, it's your problem." I'm wondering if, you know, you can use your influence as members of Main Street, can you talk to these loft owners, landlords and say, "Yeah, there's a parking lot across the street they can park in. Why park the car there all day long, the block that easy access?" Because, you know, mentally, when people go downtown and see the south side of Cherokee Phil, they say, "Well, I can't go to Gronos today, I can't get a haircut, I can't go in the BMW or Tenpenny," or something like that. And it's not necessarily true, but it's that image, and if people would, let's, let's share the parking property. I don't know if you can have any influence...
I think that's something that Leavenworth Main Street can do, because we can provide a, if you will, a nonofficial presence in discussion. One of the things, I came in here, I got here a little early, I was talking to Larry, I had a conversation with Mary Nakbar at the depot. She had someone in a pole outside her place, she was wondering what was going to happen with that. She hadn't heard back from the city. I said, "No, I can talk to them about that, that's, that's what we can do." You know, for our members for sure. There was concern with members on some of the things that were happening downtown, you know, a bomb, some type of thieving. Well, a lot of members came to us, saying, "What, can we talk to the city about this?" You know, so we set that up. We've had Sister...
Vicki.
Vicki, who talked about, come talk to us and present to us about a homeless shelter for downtown. Where was it going to be, what can we do to help influence the city's location, those type of things. That's one of the resources that Leavenworth Main Street provides, is a, a nonofficial community civic organization, so.
So one of the things we've costed out, back to the parking, your specific question, back to the parking is one of the things we've costed out and is kind of in our, if we get the money, what we'd like to do is to re-mark the open parking lots. Some, you go to some other towns and they've got either large banners, or they've gone to, they like the international P, which, one of my kind of ideas since we have the international officer population here, but, and, you know, but what we want to do is come up with some designs and some proposals and say, well, see whether we can either do, can we do a specific fundraiser from our sponsors to raise that money, or can we maybe partner? Sometimes, you know, we've come to the city and asked for partnership, but on the other hand, since you do give us part of our money, we usually like to do everything we can without having to come back since we're already coming out of the budget. So that's, but in the parking, I think that may be one thing too, is just to let people know, because I'm, I'm in the group that says there is a lot of parking downtown, but sometimes you're not sure whether it's a private lot or a public lot. So helping people know what's private and public is, you know, maybe one another way, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think that the times need to be looked at too. If you have more longer-term residents, you're going to need more long-term parking, but that's still, you don't want to have an owner sitting in that long-term parking all day long because you still need space for people to come and go from the businesses. I know it's a delicate balance. Parking is like one of the hardest and most contentious issues, you know, to deal with. But I agree with Tom that, you know, there is enough parking. You do have to get used to walking.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And people, they can, they can park in the south 40 of a shopping mall, but you know, you are not going to get right in front of the store of your, you know, your choice there on that, so it's larger cities that do.
I like the idea of marking or universal marking and maybe we can discuss that later.
Yeah. And I think too that, like, the signage, that, the one example that comes to mind is the green sign that's on the corner of Fourth and Delaware. Maybe looking at something like that for our public parking. It would be dressier, it would, you know, and it, you know, it would, it's more at eye level, shorter, you know, just, and also just to dress up, you know, the look of the downtown, maybe looking at that for, you know, to help...
So directional signage to help them, tell them, "Hey, there's public parking down here."
You know, directional signage is, 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 is good, you know, Delaware's, you know, one-way on that, but, but really, you know, you know, people can just tell by the way the cars are pointed, what the direction they're going to go. I, I think it would be more, it would improve the development. Some of the parking lots do look a little rough too on that, you know, and we can, we can kind of address that. But I just think it's, where that particular sign is, I think that that's in a very busy intersection, so I don't know if it's as best served there, but I think that if you're, if you designate and highlight the parking areas more than just that in and out sign, I think that would, you know, spruce up the look, you know, and it would, you know, designate at the eye level that it really is public parking. That's, that's my two cents on the parking thing. I'm really not in favor, and I know it's hard, of re-establishing and officer, you know, for parking, you know, where we, without, with or without the parking attendant, you know, we have the same issues and, and she would, you know, and honestly Stacy's temperament to her credit was really good for that, but basically by and large, she was a babysitter for people that, you know, really should be able to figure this out, adult-wise on that. And I would encourage whatever influence that Main Street can do, that we come to a positive situation, because I'm not really for manning a police officer. I want to man for a police officer position, and I do, would like to see that. Other challenges, I would like to see an officer in a different capacity than that, so that, that's my feeling on, on the parking on that. I think that as a community, we can come together and try to work that out. And there's no, no perfect solution. I, we've addressed that several times as, over the commission, and that's just, it's just a hard, it's not, it's not going to be perfect.
I think you can accomplish more by talking to people than you can by coming in and enacting a law or putting, you know, another cop on block or whatever.
I think so. I think once, you know, you know, and it's, a lot of times too, the person that has the loft living, you know, also has the business below that, it's in their best interest to make sure that they've got people coming in their store, and they've got a happy tenant on that. And I think, I've lived downtown with three cars, I know it's possible to do it, but yes, you do have to get out there, and if you do want to play with the time game and park in front there, so if you leave for work, your car is right there on the corner, but if you're not leaving that day, you need to get out there and find long-term parking on the parking lot, and be considerate. Be a considerate resident and get off of the street during business hours and that. You know, I did it with a loft apartment with three cars, it's, it's possible. You have to be considerate though, and, and most of the people that are not considered are the business owners themselves or their employees. So I know that with talking with this, we can work this out.
Well, certainly something that, in that last point is exactly the point I try and make to some of the business owners, is that they're infringing on their own profits when they do that.
Yeah, that's, we should know that, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, I know a lot of their cars too, and sometimes I'll drive up and I'm just like, wow, okay. You know, I...
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I want to see a police officer enforcing, you know, is people scooting in those handicap places where they're not. And that's, that's just a, that's just a slap on the hand.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Next up is the library, Matt.
Welcome, Matt, Dave.
Hello. Brought some information along, and it feels like it's last minute, but took me a while to get some of this data together. So I wanted to share some documents, let's talk about it real briefly. It's, give you, I'm already scheduled to meet with you next Tuesday night, so at that point, I was going to present our report on our first half of the year's progress for our strategic plan. But this will give you a general idea of the kind of return of investment you get from your library here in the city of Leavenworth. I shared the same information, I think, with you last year, and I like to, to keep up with that and try to, to collect the same information and make the same comparisons year after year, just so that we have a base rate, we can see how well we're doing in a few of these different areas. And I won't go over it in detail, but I guess the bottom line is what I'd like to focus on, on the front, on the front page there. If you take all of the material that we circulated and ask everybody in Leavenworth to pay for it, it would cost one amount. Because they come to the library to borrow it from us, and it only costs us four dollars and forty cents to circulate an item, we saved consumers over a million, two-hundred thousand dollars in the first six months of this year, based on the average cost of a book, the average cost of DVD, and the other material that is loaned. So the idea that the taxpayers are, are getting what they, what they need in a very efficient manner, I think, is emphasized, is certainly pretty clear to me when I look at the, literally the amount of money that it would cost the person in Leavenworth to pay for the stuff that we provide to them for free. I believe our per capita distribution is about sixteen dollars at, a year. And if you, again, if no library will just hand you sixteen dollars and see how much you can get for that, you'll get a book, and that's about it. To provide access to e-audio, for example, it's a hundred and forty dollars a year just for a membership, the cheapest one that you can get through Amazon, then you have to pay for the material that you listen to. So again, that, that sixteen dollars per person multiplied by all the contributions and all the people participating, really goes a long way, I think. And I know we've had discussions at our, at our board meeting about the, the library budget, and I think the, there's been, I guess, a big concern, I'd like to clear up a concern impression that we have built a large reserve from tax dollars, that's not the case, we've spent more than our total tax revenues for years, by two-hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars since two thousand and eleven. The vast majority of our reserves have been derived from donations, fines, and fees. None of those can be relied on, really, or, and certainly aren't intended to replace tax dollars, when the foundation writes us a check, when Neckles gives us a check, they have specific, they'd like to see the library do sort of special things with that, not pay our light bills, not pay our staff, not do things like that. So we've also been spending those reserves down, our capital improvements fund is down twenty-three percent since two thousand and ten, our gifts and memorials fund down, is down twelve percent. So we have been taking pieces out of those two areas and using them to provide things like new furniture, new equipment. We've helped fund a lot of programs that way. But we depend on you as our partners for the resources that we use to buy, to pay utilities, buy materials, maintain technology, and pay the staff who provide, what I consider a pretty top-notch service to the thousands of, of people in town, our friends, neighbors, and relatives. To paraphrase the president of the Hair Club for Men, I'm not only a library director, I'm a library user. So I also take advantage of the services that we offer here in town. We have raised pay, modest average of about one point nine percent a year since two thousand and fourteen, including a planned increase for two thousand and seventeen. But we started at a base rate of about seven dollars and fifty cents an hour. We, our goal is to put our pay scale on par with other libraries in the area, in that group, where Agitson, Baser, Bonner Springs, Lansing, and Tonga Noxian. We have achieved that goal, we're not the highest paid, we're not the lowest paid, we're pretty much right in the middle. But even next year, with all the growth that we've experienced, again, that one point nine percent a year, eleven of our twenty-eight employees will be making less per hour than the lowest city, paid, paid city employee in two thousand and seventeen. We have economized a lot, we've cut item, line items that don't directly serve the public by about twenty percent since two thousand and fourteen, including supplies, insurance, and postage. And those savings have enabled us to increase our materials budget by about nine percent over the same period. So we have scoured our entire budget for any kind of, anything that we can find, even a few hundred dollars here. We, we negotiated contracts for services for insurance and, and worked very, very hard to trim the, what I consider overhead, and turn that into public resources, mostly books and other materials. And we do maintain a reserve in the employee benefits fund, we were asked to spend that down and notify the city when the balance became an issue, and that time has arrived. Based on projected expenses, our, our reserve may be as low as fifteen thousand at the end of this year, and that would put the fund in the red by two thousand and eighteen. So we have, we are requesting that the commission exercise your authority to adjust that mill rate to cover the expenses. And that has been adjusted before, it's, it's fluctuated from two thousand and eleven, oh, point oh eight three three, in twelve it was oh point oh eight five one, then to oh eight five nine, and it's held steady at oh eight six eight for the last two years. So that is really what we came to talk about, I think financially, we've, we understand that we plan for one percent decrease in property tax revenues, and we can certainly live within those means. The general fund revenues of, again, we've tried very hard to economize, we have stretched our dollars, we know that we're aiming them in the right direction. Again, providing more materials and more direct service, we're getting busier all the time, and different ways of business. The library's programs attendance is just exploding, the number of people that are coming to our children's reading program is growing by leaps and bounds. We kind of stole Cindy McGuire from the folks who are here before us, and she has done a fantastic job establishing and maintaining our online presence. We have a great deal of, I think, excitement in the community about the library being a place to go, that has things to offer, not just a collection of books.
It's, it's, it's a community meeting place, because, you know, my groups use it, and so many variety of groups meet there too. It is really a hub, you know, I think of our community now, because you do attract a lot of different types of groups in that. And, and I see them drifting more into the library and looking, checking it out.
And we have, this is the first year we've put an emphasis on a, a reading program for adults in the summer, and that's been very successful. And it's funny how adults are just like kids, they want to know what the prizes are, and what they have to do to earn one. But we've had music programs, we've had writers, we're, next week, we're having a gentleman, his name, his last name is McNary, I can't place, can't remember his first name. He was a three-time Nobel Prize nominee, and he's coming to the library to talk about his book about sustainable agriculture and food safety and, and not wasting food. In other words, trying to maximize what we make, how we, how we eat it, and how we preserve it. So there are a lot of things going on at the library, of course, we are, today, right, right now, they're doing some changes in our yawn room. The projector in that room is dying, so the library board approved the purchase of two large screen TVs, and we're going to use that technology. It provides a better picture, it provides easier access, and we have a laptop with a wireless connection now, somebody wants to come to use our meeting room and has a PowerPoint presentation, they can pop it right in the machine, connects directly to the television, boom, there it is. Anybody that wants to use, do a webinar, we're, we signed up for a webinar about library advocacy, so we can all gather in that room and watch it through that, through that smart TV. We're going to put one in the young adult room too, and we can imagine the kids, one of our more popular teen programs is gaming on Thursday nights. And that will provide a, a great opportunity for those kids to have access to a far better system for that kind of activity. The other things that we're, that we're looking at through the end of the year, we're not quite sure if we're going to do another fundraiser in October, we've had so many other things going on that we have not had enough advanced time to plan that, we might do it later in the year. But we have great plans, and I, I don't want to tip my hand too much, I'm looking forward to Tuesday night to, to tell you. These are the plans we made, this is how far we've gotten along, and this is how we anticipate meeting our goals for this year.
I'm just amazed at how forty-seven percent of all Leavenworth residents have a library, that's almost fifty percent, that's amazing. And eighty-two percent of those are adults.
And we, we, well, what I, we've.
Yeah.
We've found that a lot of times the parents like to have control of the card. If you look at the volume of, the kid's circulation is almost half of what we borrow, but a lot of it's going out on mom or dad's card. And I'm glad you brought that up, because in September, it's National Library Card Sign-up Month. And we did a pilot program with Lawson Elementary just before school went out, we sent applications out with all the children there, got them back, processed them, got a lot of new cards in kids' hands. And we're going to do that district-wide in September. So the school, we're partnering on getting a library card application in the hands of every student in the city school district. And I mentioned this yesterday at the Rotary meeting when I did a program there, and the first thing heard was, "Well, why don't you work with the post schools?" So, "Well, that's next," and we kind of started small with one school, just to see how it would work, if it can be pulled off efficiently and, and rapidly, and it did. So we'll start with, again, do it district-wide, and then next year, we can do both. There are several thousand kids involved, and so getting, getting more cards out there. We just had a book sale, we sold kids' books for a dime a piece, made a hundred and eighty-two dollars, so it's almost two thousand.
More books in kids' hands.
Every kid at Lawson, every, every child in the district, we do it in September, will get a coupon for a free book from our book sale. So even if they don't get a card, their parents decide, "We have one already," or "We don't want you to get one for whatever reason," they can come to the library with that coupon and select a book. So we're always looking for new partnerships in the community, that's been a, a big goal of ours, it's one of our stated goals in our plan. We're going to participate, I'm in charge of the upcoming STEM event, which is a combination of library, community, schools, St. Mary's, everybody, we have a lot, a lot of good programs working. On that date, it'll be October sixth, so the, the library's thriving, I don't know, if you listen to people on TV, nobody reads anymore, that's not quite true.
That's not true.
No.
Actually, I was in, in, in the library, and my son is twenty-three, he's twenty-four, and I was straightening up, and he had a library book. And I, you know, and I mean, and he buys like now his own books and that, but I was like, guys went, and he, and his friends, they were, they went to the library looking for something in particular, and he saw the book, decided to check it out. So those, I was really happy, because those good, strong things that we raised him, they creeped in there and they stayed, so.
It is hard, traditionally, traditionally libraries I've, I've worked in and across the country would tell you that teen audience is hard. They, they love it when they're little, but then they discover girls, baseball, driver's licenses.
Because they're like, you know, they're focused on school and career, or any, or they go to the university, and he gets his, you know, his, his books there. So I know you, you lose that window until they start having their own children, and, but I was just, yeah, I was just really kind of impressed, because they're all twenty-three-ish, twenty-four-ish, and they were still using the library.
And our teen librarians, I think are doing an excellent job, or the person who's now in charge of our department was a teen librarian when she started, and she has brought in a couple of, of new employees who have that background, have that emphasis, want to serve that audience and, and connect with those kids, which is really tough to do. A guy like me trying to make a thirteen-year-old think I'm cool just wouldn't work. You look like my grandfather, so it's, it works much better to have some younger people. One of our employees has her blog, and today I just found out that with this Pokemon Go phenomenon, she, she posted something on the blog about how libraries could use this. And so tomorrow, she's been invited, this happened literally overnight, she's been invited to do a webinar for a bunch of librarians in Florida about how they can use this Pokemon Go in programs, so. So, again, she's, that age group, she, she's far more connected with them, and it's just, again, reaching out and doing a lot to, to make the library seem like a cool place, or become a cool place for kids that age, it's not just for mom and dad, it's not just for little brothers and sisters. So we are emphasizing a lot of, a lot of good things with a lot of new audiences, and when, if you look at the back of the second page of the report here, the library is used for reading through January through June of last year is fifty-nine percent of all borrowing, this year it's sixty-one. So literally, reading is a, still a, a thriving business for us. Now, maybe reading of a different kind, it might be reading a book on a laptop or a device, but that still counts, still counts as reading.
Well, your meeting room is used twice, looks like twice.
Yeah, like I said, that's why, it's, you have to, you have to book well in advance now to get a meeting room there.
That's why we don't allow, don't allow people to go more than six months in advance, because if, if they would block out, I would like to block out every Tuesday night for the whole year. But I think within a month, everyone would be occupied every hour of every night and day, and it would just be shut out, there would be no access for anybody else. If you look at our, our program attendance, sixty's, we're almost at seven thousand compared to five thousand last year. And a lot of that growth is happening with adults and teens, and two audiences that we have been really trying to emphasize with, with programming. I don't know if you heard, last month, we had a guy came in that plays a West African instrument called a kora.
I saw it, yeah.
Which was, it's kind of like a West African sitar, and that was, that was well attended, we've had a classical guitarist, we've had a jazz group in there. So it's a lot of fun stuff going on in Leavenworth these days.
Thank you.
I've got a question here on this page with your expense, revenue versus expenses. I don't understand, employee benefits under revenue, how's that a revenue?
No web issue, where are you?
You have revenue, city tax, day twenty-eight, and employee benefits, two twenty-eight, is that correct to be on a revenue?
Yeah, it's, it's the employee benefits transfer.
Yeah, we do that.
Okay, okay, now I understand, but the eight twenty-eight, one eighteen is based on four point five nine four mill rate, am I correct? Four point five?
It's, it's based on a three point seven five, this really should say library benefits.
Transfer.
Ad valorem, so it's this point eight four four.
Okay.
And then this is three, three point seven five, which is set by ordinance. The benefits is not set by ordinance, the operating amount, three point seven five mils, is set by ordinance.
So eight twenty-eight, one eighteen, eight twenty-eight, one eighteen by three point seven five, we're not bringing in two hundred and twenty thousand per mil, are we?
No, it wouldn't be that high.
So. Because one mil's worth approximately two hundred thousand, a little less than a ninety-seven, two oh two, whatever, yeah, okay. And I heard Matt early, you know, you got an issue, and you said, you know, "We need more money," basically. But you didn't say how much more money or how much mil, I mean, what are you asking for? And we know what you did, we know that, now let's concentrate on numbers now.
And that's kind of tricky, because the employee benefits pays for health benefits, and we don't know what those rates are going to be. Again, projecting out, looking at what we anticipate spending, and if, if the mill rate stayed the same, and the same amount was collected, roughly at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred, I'm expecting our reserves to be.
The hundred and eighty-nine, six hundred is what now?
That's what was collected, has been collected for our employee benefits fund for the last couple of years.
Okay, and you're just estimating two twenty-eight for next year?
Yes, including all the costs that, that, those dollars are expected to cover. And we're looking at possibly having a, let's go back to my notes here. The reserve may be as low as fifteen thousand dollars at the end of next year, again, anticipating, I, I built in about a ten percent increase for insurance, I know that's.
Said, you said you think it's going to be ten percent, are you, I mean, and, and we always grapple, you know, with that too.
Exactly.
Ours is eight now, but, yeah.
And then last, last year, I heard it, again, early on, it's so early in the, in the season, you get these.
When do you start looking and shopping for?
We are part of the city's plan.
That's right, I forgot about that, I did, yeah.
So last year, the word was, "Well, anticipate possibly a thirteen percent increase," so we did, and it didn't end up going, I think it was only about a nine percent or something. But it makes no sense to say, "Well, I think we'll get about a six percent increase," and then you get a ten percent increase, and then you're really, you're really left hanging. So we built, anticipated a ten percent increase, if that, if that doesn't materialize, of course, that, that money won't be required. But if it does, and. materialize, of course, that, that money won't be required. Uh, but if it does, and it may be, again, that, that benefit reserve may be fifteen thousand dollars at the end of two thousand and seventeen, which means that going to eighteen, if it stayed at a hundred eighty-nine, plus the, plus the reserve of fifteen, at that point, we'll, we won't have enough.
We're up just figuring on that and get with, uh, Lana to find out what, what was our insurance increases.
We budgeted at eight. We, we had it budgeted at ten for most of the preliminary parts of the budget, but we made the plan design change for the single payer that we mentioned yesterday. That brought us where we were comfortable budgeting eight percent increase.
Have we got locked, are we locked in with the insurance companies on that yet?
We're, we're not locked in, but Lana doesn't give me a number that she can't hit. So we're comfortable, we're comfortable budgeting eight.
Okay.
Does, and, and do you have a, a minimum standard that you'd like to keep your reserve at? Do you budget that from that?
I honestly don't know. This is the first time since I've started that I've, that I've had this situation. Uh, so I would assume that there would be, you know, you wouldn't wanna just look at this every year and, and come in at a zero balance. You'd wanna have something in there to help absorb.
That's why, that's why I'm asking. I mean, you don't want your reserve to get to nothing, so i- is there like a baseline where you're, you know, that you say, but it, it really can't go any lower than this, based on X number of months of operation or something like that? Is, you know, that's how some people do it, some entities do it.
For benefits, that's tricky, because again, if, if you have someone who's taking the benefits and then they quit, the next person takes the job, they don't take them. So that, that's what's been, um, very difficult, try, and, and getting the timing with, when you actually know what the rates are going to be.
Well, even if you're looking at a percentage of increase on what your benefits may or may not increase, I don't know. There's got, there's gotta be some type of, you know, minimum before you reach the danger zone, whatever that is, and you're signaling to us the danger zone is upon us.
Right. Well, looking at the history of the amount of money in those reserves, in two thousand and ten, it was twenty-eight, then it was forty-one, sixty-three, sixty-two, sixty-seven, sixty-one, thirty-three. So it's been as high as sixty-seven and as low as twenty-eight.
You're talking just the benefits reserve, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And there's really no reason to have benefits reserves unless it's just because, so you can draw down on them in years, because you're not gonna ever exceed your benefits in a year. You can only come in below if you're estimating or budgeting correctly. So if they, he said they were down to zero by the end of next year, then it would just be incumbent upon the commission to budget them enough to get through the next year, but you'd only need, you'd only, you knowingly, be going into a year knowing you're gonna have to use reserves. Shouldn't have any emergency circumstances of needing benefits reserves during a year, if that makes sense. It's not like operating reserves. If there, if something happened at the library, uh, that they had to pay for, five computers broke, it wouldn't come out of the employee benefits reserve, it would come out of their operating reserve.
Right.
And we can't use it, we can't use that person.
So then, okay, then why then is there a benefit reserve?
Because of the last three or four years where the commission did not want to raise the millage rate, so they were able to draw on those employee benefits reserves, which is why you're able to kinda build them up, as, as Matt mentioned, when an employee leaves, you kinda build them up, so then you can kinda draw them down. It's nice to have, it's just, it's not necessary, but it is nice to have in lean years, or if you don't wanna increase the millage rate, you're able to draw on them a couple of times.
And my concern with that fund in particular, because it is getting so close to the bone, uh, in light of the new state legislature, which puts a cap on the amount that can be, the, a mill rate can go up at any one year. If this money goes away, and it will require a millage increase that exceeds the inflation rate, we're trapped. Uh, that will be very difficult to, to manage and maintain. So I guess I, I wouldn't like to see it go down to the point where, to, to make things be next year, we'll have to do this. What if it exceeds the inflation rate?
Well, it can't increase the inflation rate of our total assessed value. I mean, it is a miniscule portion of it, but the only impact it could have, if the city was also raising our millage rates a couple mils, and then the library needed it, then you could get into it, but the library benefits fund is less than, I mean, it's a tiny percentage of the overall assessed valuation of the city. So it could contribute to the city if the city was looking at mils, but on its own, it couldn't.
And I would want our interests to collide at that point.
How long has it been at three point seven five mils?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah.
Was that, uh, and that was just established by the city commissioner, or was that as a vote?
Yeah, it's by ordinance.
By ordinance. At, at three point seven five?
At three point seven five mils.
So the ordinance changed to-
Right.
But that, that's the general fund.
Yeah.
I understand, I understand.
And in the history, hundreds of plus years, it's only gone up three times.
And the benefit, uh, uh, bond, is it eight point four, or zero point eight four, uh, mils?
That's not by ordinance.
How, how is that set?
It's a state.
And we can, we can roll that up and down.
Yep.
But then that can only be used in employee benefits.
Right.
Doing it for operations.
You can transfer from operating to employee benefits. You can't transfer from employee benefits to operating, is what you said.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Look forward to seeing you on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's take a ten minutes.
Hopefully the whole rain look crazy.
Yeah, you need to come to Lions.
Well, I, I usually get invited every year to-
Well, we always have new rituals.
Yeah, I, I calculated one or two.